Just making sure everybody on Zoom can hear me. If you can't hear me on Zoom, please let me know in the chat. Colin's in there. Okay, alright. Good. Good afternoon. Welcome to today's Planning Commission meeting. So, let's start with a roll call. Mr. Clucker is absent today. You know that. I'm the Vice Chair, Rich Spiker. I'm obviously present. Tony Mazanowski? Thank you. Colin Russ?
Present.
Jason Wizard?
Present.
So, we have a quorum. First item of business is the approval of the November 21st, 2023 meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion approved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item. Number three on the agenda, waterfront approval, waterfront conditional use application, 917 West Front Street. It's a new single-family dwelling. This was reviewed several weeks ago by the Design Review Committee. They approved it and passed it on to us for consideration. Jake, do you have anything you want to say about it?
The only thing I'll add is that the proposed site plan and building do meet all of the zoning ordinance requirements as far as lot yard and height requirements.
Okay, thank you. The owner's present. Mr. Rue, do you want to say anything?
So, Planning Commission members, so two of us are virtual, two in person here, and my name's Dave Rio. And the only thing I'd like to say is that as far as from a use perspective, again, yes, it's I'm the owner. It's going to be our forever retirement home, and residential only. As folks may know or may not know, originally, I purchased three lots on Second Street, which were substantially non-conforming lots that breached over to Front Street. Then on Front Street, there was one address, 917, which was a welding shop. And we raised that building, annexed off the commercial part of it to keep it residential. So we really then replotted the property. So we ended up with two good size, I think the zoning officer would agree, good-sized parcels that we carved off for residential use only, to keep with the theme of the neighborhood. And that was the only last commercial remaining building there. So it gives us all residential there. And then as the Design Committee noted, there was an unanimous agreement that the design itself fit within that neighborhood and the confines of that environment. So, other than that, I can answer any questions and or address any issues.
Anybody have any, commission members have any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion for approval.
I'll motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Say, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate your investment in the city.
Thank you much. Have the holidays, David.
Yes. Next item. We all received as part of the information for the meeting some proposed zoning ordinance amendments related to screening. Jake, do you want to briefly review what's included in the proposed changes?
Yeah, just by way of providing some background, which was included in the handout. The short-term rental regulations were adopted earlier in the year. And so we've been accepting applications over the last few months. And as part of the conditions that were set in the zoning ordinance for STRs, any proposed STR that's in an R1 or an R1A district is required to obtain special use or special exception use approval, which requires the zoning hearing board to hear those requests. So, what we've discovered over the last couple of months is that the zoning hearing board has been having some problems with really trying to adequately determine whether or not the screening requirements are being met by the applicants. And partially because the language is relatively open, it's not explicitly described as far as where the screening is required. So, and a couple of the terms that are being used in the existing language are undefined in the ordinance. So that again leads to some question marks. And really in reviewing this with the Solicitor's Office, you know, we did find a few areas where that similar language is used. But this, it could lead to some inconsistent interpretation of the requirements and possibly even result in challenges to zoning compliance determinations. So, that's why it's recommended that the language be amended. And the amendments that were included in the, in the attachment are what's being proposed by the Solicitor's Office and zoning office.
Any of the members have, having reviewed it, have any questions about the proposed amendments?
I have one, just kind of a continuation from our discussions last month. It was a lot of work to mark this up, and some of the ideas that we proposed last month could potentially be changed with just a few words in my original zoning. I get that this is important, that we eliminate any gray areas in our zoning code. But there's also other ways we can modernize our zoning to keep with the rest of the country. How do we get those to become priorities in these meetings? Because I think a lot of those ideas we discussed promote more flexible and ample construction opportunities to redevelop our city. And this is just kind of splitting hairs with. I get why we got to do this, but there's more dramatic positive change we can create here at some point. And I'm thinking every year I've been on this committee, this is the month usually where we talk about our goals for next year. That's not on the agenda for this, this month.
It'll be on January's.
So when are we, when are we going to set our agenda for next year that we're acting like when we lay out our goals? Trying to accomplish them next year? We did recommend some of the same goals over in Oregon for several years now. And I'm not going to say I'm holding this one up just as a point of discussion. This one took a lot more thought than some of the other objectives we laid out.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can discuss that in, as part of the next agenda item, as far as what we're looking at for planning goals for next year, which includes a zoning ordinance audit.
Okay. Tony or Colin, any questions or comments on the proposed amendments?
Nothing beyond what Jason just said.
Okay. Alright. Someone care to make a motion to recommend approval for adoption of these amendments?
I'll motion.
I'll make a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. This goes to City Council sometime, probably in January.
I'll probably prepare the recommendations this week to get to council so they can look at scheduling.
Okay.
Because for this, for zoning ordinance amendments, they'll need to schedule a public hearing. And they'll need to be due notice of that hearing and an opportunity for county planning to review those proposed changes. So, I expect that probably will occur February.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Alright.
So for next year, we should do them as batches? It'd be more convenient for everybody to sit on one of them.
Right. And this was, this was time sensitive because of the applications being held up for short-term rooms.
Okay.
That's why it was moved forward quickly.
Alright, thank you. Next item is the Planning and Neighborhood Resources Activity Updates.
Good afternoon. How's everyone today?
Good. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Well, we are wrapping, not wrapping up, but at least trying to get things organized before we really move into the next year. There's going to be a lot of work to be done. So, just, in, just a few updates, we, with our Safe Streets for All grant, we had it out for, it was posted, the RFP was posted. We received five proposals and we're in the process of communicating back to those consultants. And we hope to be able to choose a consultant, I believe, before the first of the year. So, that will be coming along, that's coming along nicely, and we're on, we're on schedule. The Environmental Advisory Council had its inaugural meeting in November. And they were, the members were announced at the press conference last week. In January, that council will be, will be brought up to date as to what other organizations have, have done in terms of environmental consciousness and concerns. And also that we have a, what's called a Partners for Places grant. It's a $10,000 grant that we're going to be discussing at January's meeting. It's an engagement grant with environmental justice areas in particular. And the hope is that we would then, from that engagement, create a local climate action plan. So, that is, it's great that we have that now at the city. Wanted to let you know, our name, our department's name is Planning and Neighborhood Resources, right? So, the neighborhood resource, part of it is taking shape. Recently, we received a grant in the amount of $70,000. It's a Neighborhood Assistance Program grant, it's a state grant from DCED, that will fund both the neighborhood, both the coordinators, the neighborhood coordinators who will be running this resource section of our department. And they'll be funding those two positions, as well as programmatic funds for Love Your Block. So that Love Your Block will be able to be sustained for the coming year. So that was really great news, and we just received that in the last couple of weeks. That neighborhood resource part of our department, we're really starting to explore. We've started to explore what the approach is going to be, what the framework is going to look like, the workflows, how we're going to integrate this, this piece into the different systems that are already in place at City Hall. And what I mean by that is how are we going to allow code enforcement and, and neighborhood resources and other departments to come together to be able to bridge that gap? So, it's, it's, there's a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of systems to figure out. And, and we're going to be working on that in the, in the very beginning of this, this new year. Wanted to let you know that we did have a meeting, if I didn't mention it last time, we had a meeting with Mill Creek, Wesleyville, and Harbor Creek here at City Hall to discuss a housing court, which I know is something that's been kind of kicked around for several years now. It was a very good discussion. The solicitors were with us, Mill Creek Solicitor was with us. And the next step is to build some more consensus around, whether it's housing court or improvements to the legal system. Right now, it's, we're trying to build consensus with other municipalities. So, I will be speaking to the COG in January and talking to them a little bit about the issues that the city is having, why we're having this discussion, and how we might be able to move forward together. So, we thought that was a good avenue since the COG is all-encompassing. Also, we met with Mill Creek Township last week. Aaron and I met with Matt Waldinger, who's the Planning Director there. And it was a really good discussion. We talked a lot about their zoning ordinance, the revisions of their zoning ordinance. We talked about updates that Mill Creek, you know, they updated us on, on some of the things Mill Creek is doing. We talked about trying to continue that, those discussions and that dialogue moving into the next year. So, that was very helpful. And then lastly, I just wanted to address, Jason, your, your comment about zoning ordinance. Like Jake said, we hope in the, in the fall, in the next year that possibly we'll do a diagnostic or an audit of zoning ordinance. We'll be looking for funding to, to work on that and to be able to modernize and make improvements to our zoning ordinance. So I think there's, there-
You don't have to spend money on that. We could just tell you. Architects use it every day. We use other municipalities, I can tell you, with, with no cost. I'll do it for free. It'll take me an hour.
Well, you're required to do an engagement piece. So that's, you know, and when talking to, talking to Mill Creek, you know, it was a, it was a, they, they had some issues because of COVID, but I mean, it is a robust engagement piece. You have to, you know, do a series of those. I don't know if it's required in the MPC, but it's best practice also to, you know, make sure that your community is engaged.
We didn't do it for this. We should engage the community for this planning strip then. Seems to have a curve. You're picking and choosing how you're applying this.
I think we're providing some clarity in that, in that piece here. There was some, to me, that's what, that, that's what, where the edits came in.
I was looking to remove two words out of the parking ordinance.
Yeah.
Fifty other communities in our country have done it. We can be at, we're not at the beginning of that trend. We're going to be in the middle of it. We could choose to be in the middle of it or at the end of those trends. Right now, we're set up to be at the end of those trends. We're not talking about how we're going to get it in the middle of those.
Well-
That's what I'm trying to instigate here is-
Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to wait till every other city in the whole country has, has done objective A, B, and C.
We have to start somewhere, and that, that place would be to do, to do some type of diagnostic, to see where the inconsistencies, where there could be improvements, contradictions, whatever it may be. But, yeah, there, there's a process that we would take to do that in the appropriate way.
I'm interested to hear why that's required because a lot of the municipalities have done this, don't have to go through a rigorous process to change a few words in their zoning.
We did speak to Mill Creek, and it wasn't just a few words. They completely revamped their, their entire zoning ordinance.
On the altar of examples that we should be compounding, that's not-
Well, I think, I think, you know, and I'm happy to, to do a report next time to talk a little bit about the process that other places have taken to update their zoning ordinance. I'm happy to look into that and report that to you next time. I'm just kind of letting you know that is, that's on our radar. That's a priority of our departments. And whatever happens, you know, is yet to be determined. But, but it is something that we have talked about. And, and we're going to, we're going to make sure that we're, we're doing it in the, in the appropriate manner.
We should find more urban models to use as our, we're a city. We're not a suburban sprawl suburb.
Sure.
We're a downtown Mill Creek app. There isn't such a thing, right?
Sure.
We don't want to be there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that, that we'll all look forward to a robust discussion of goals next-
We will.
Yeah. Next month. About where, things that the commission has come to think are important to consider and how we move them forward. We can be a, since we meet just once a month, you know, it, it's hard to get a lot of momentum to move things forward for things that for most people are pretty esoteric. But they do make a, they will make a, an important, have an important effect and improvement to the, the direction of the city, we believe.
Agree.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we, we want to work with the Planning Commission, obviously, and, and be aligned in your priorities. We don't want to work against them, of course. So, I think it's important that we, that we have that discussion. Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any public comment? Please identify yourself.
Good afternoon. I'm Jason Check. I'm the Deputy Solicitor for the City of Erie. So my office is up here with Ted Betzel on the fifth floor. I only raised my hand to speak really because there was some question about the comments on the zoning ordinance changes or amendments. And just so you know, although you've already voted on them, they didn't come out of a vacuum. There's been, just like you were asking about, hey, what's the vision for the future? The zoning hearing board has also asked questions, and they have their own concerns about how to interpret the zoning ordinance. So the short-term rentals has been an issue the last several months. People have been applying, other applications haven't been outright denied, but they've been tabled. And so we've had three, four, or five of those, I think, over the last couple of months. So, two of the most pertinent questions, and this is just to kind of clarify why, was the definition of screen planting strip? And I know that that's three words, but then it came to, people were asking, the zoning hearing board was asking questions like, well, what? I know what a screen is. I know what a plant is. I know what a strip is. However, it's not exactly defined. And as a lawyer, I know what those are individually, but put them together.
I, I watch the zoning board meetings.
Okay, so you know exactly what I'm talking about?
I appreciate where this came from. I just, on the list of priorities for the committee, when I, when I think of like my children and their chances of potentially living in this community in the future, does planting strips going to make them live here in the future? Or is making our city more livable overall going to accomplish that?
I don't know.
And to me, there's a lot of ways our zoning code prohibits a lot of development in our community that, that decades we've been missing out on.
But it might be for your family, if your children live like out of town and are visiting for the holidays, they want to rent a house, a short-term rental. This definition change may help the property they stay at in the future be the short-term rental they stay at.
I, I took my family to Detroit over Thanksgiving vacation. We had an Airbnb downtown Detroit. We didn't look at the planting strips once. I'll have to go back to look.
But maybe the zoning board did.
Those things that do there.
So these few little definitions will help several members of the zoning board. So, I'm not, not to be redundant, but the same thing with the change in, at the definition of dwelling. You know, short-term rentals really are commercial properties, and it says in there residential. So this can, this makes it clear that it's a commercial property like all the other short-term type of hotels, motels, or B&amp;Bs. So that's where it came from. So I'm glad you watched the zoning board hearings because that shortens my little speech a little quicker. So I appreciate that.
I'm one of the ten views.
But thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments with the good of the order? If not, does there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Hope you all have a wonderful Christmas and safe New Years. We'll see you in January. Happy holidays.
Thank you, everybody.